Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along connecting to the district's website, WCSO-H.org. Click on our district link then select Board of Education, then Board Docs and select This Evening's Meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.01 through 11.01. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table at the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01. This is our recognition section and we are very excited tonight to have Dr. Kim Miller-Smith from the Ohio School Boards Association who is going to make a very special recognition tonight of our very own Dr. Nancy Nestor-Baker. Would you please approach the podium? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, and greetings from the Ohio School Board Association. And I do thank you for allowing me to participate in your meeting this evening. Just a little bit about the central region. We serve 14 counties in Central Ohio and 103 public school districts. In your packets that I have given to you, we are promoting four items right now. We are promoting Involvement in Kids PAC and that's a political action committee that is committed to public schools. We are promoting our regional awards that will occur and we will recognize folks in September. We are recognizing student or trying to promote Student Achievement Fair. And I also dropped off a special application for Dr. Kellogg for the Outstanding Board Member Award as well. So I'd like for you to take a look at all of that. We do sponsor the Fall and Spring Conference. We recognize the achievements of school districts and board members, teachers, community members, district employees, and we support regional and state success through a system of committees. But tonight I'm here to recognize the service of and to present to Westerville City Schools Board of Education member Dr. Nancy Nestor-Baker her 15-year milestone service award on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association. We thank Dr. Nestor-Baker for her service to public education and her work to promote the students and the families of the district. Dr. Nestor-Baker, that's a mouthful to get out at once.
I like Dr. Kim Miller-Smith.
I want to read to you your plaque. I have your certificate, Distinguished Board Member. The Ohio School Board Association recognizes Dr. Nancy Nestor-Baker as a 15-year veteran board member and for her continued dedication and commitment to public education as a school board member. And it's signed by Richard Lewis, the director, the executive director of the Ohio School Board Association, and Denise Baba, the OSBA president. Thank you. And I just wanted to say one last thing. We also want to thank all of our school board members, all of you, for your dedication and your willingness to lead your community and your families. It's because of efforts such as yours that we do enjoy strong public schools in the state of Ohio, so thank you.
You knew that if she called my name that I would speak. You knew that's the way it worked. Now, when I heard that I would be receiving this very much appreciated resolution from the Ohio School Board Association, I thought back on all the years I've sat in the board seat, of all the wonderful people I've had the good fortune to work with, of the many, many things that we've been able to accomplish, of the challenges we've surmounted and the opportunities that we've stepped up to grab, of the happy times and the sad times. I am so thankful for the many board members I've served with, I think there are more than 20, for the superintendents, not more than 20, the treasurers, the administrators, the teachers, the classified staff. And it is a delight to have worked with parents and families, community groups, associations, and individual members of our community. And I am incredibly proud of our current and former students. It's wonderful to be able to watch our young children grow into amazing young adults and then see them pass into adulthood where we celebrate their amazing successes. You know, one of my favorite times of year is this time of year, I call it the handshaking season. And it's a wonderful time, as you all know, because it's the time of year when we get to shake the hands of our young people, of our staff, of our volunteers, and to celebrate our schools. I am deeply grateful to the members of our community for allowing me to serve on the Board of Education. Even now, after all the years, I still feel a thrill when I say I am a member of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. I am still delighted when I think about the fact that the public has chosen to let me be part of our schools in this way. It doesn't get any better than that. And indeed, my board service is and will continue to be one of the great joys of my life. Some of my family members are here tonight to be with me as I receive this recognition, and I'm not so sure that my board service has always been one of the great joys of their lives. Board service can be really tough on a family, not just when times are hard or the decisions are contentious, but in the day-to-day life that we all lead. I am immensely thankful for them, for their help and support, yes, but more so for their strength and for their desires to always fight the good fight. You know, American public education is an amazing thing. It's something worth both celebrating and fighting for. No one else in the world has anything quite like it. Here, in our community and across our country, the Great American Experiment is carried out, right in our own backyards. Here, we build a shared understanding of what the public good means, for each one of us and for all of us. In our Great American Public School model, our schools belong to all of us and are open to all of us. They reflect whom we are in our communities, they reflect whom we have been, and they both reflect and encourage whom we believe we can be, whom we hope our children become, our children, the ones in our homes, the ones in our neighborhoods, the ones in all of our communities. What an incredible gift to stand and to have stood with all of the remarkable people of the Westerville City Schools, to be part of the Great American education system, to have the chance to be here with all of you this evening, and to know that Westerville City Schools is indeed where you belong and where my granddaughter Madeline belongs as well. Thank you, Dr. Miller-Smith, and everyone at the Ohio School Board Association for this recognition. Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, and thank you, Mr. Griffith, for your leadership. And thank you all of my board colleagues for your thoughtful, caring governance. And thank you all for your service to public education.
This is from all the board members, just in recognition of Nancy's outstanding service and some of the mentoring that she's done actually for each one of us in debating and discussing and encouraging. We just wanted to provide you with a small token of our appreciation as well.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Dr. Miller-Smith, for coming tonight and helping us to honor Nancy Nestor-Baker. We refer to Nancy as the long nameplate person, so we... Thank you. And it's an honor to honor someone who cares that deeply about public education. We, also in Agenda Item 3, we have another recognition that we would like to do, and it has to do with the fine arts, and a fine arts education that the Westerville City Schools tries to provide for its students. So let me share a little bit with you. We would like to take a few minutes to stop and acknowledge all the incredible work that is being done each day in our schools by unsung heroes who labor tirelessly behind the scenes in the area of arts education. Walk through any building and you will see, and you will be amazed by the beautiful artwork often on display. Listen carefully and you will hear choirs singing in perfect harmony and orchestras playing the works of classic composers. Band members are performing on instruments and marching in intricate patterns, while student thespians entertain us with plays that make us laugh and cry and sing along and sometimes think deeply. We would like to offer special thanks to staff and volunteers who make the Westerville City School District frankly a more beautiful place in which to work and learn. If you play a role in arts education, we really are grateful for you. We are proud to live in a school community that values art. It would be impossible to list every highlight, but we are going to read to you just a few of the highlights from the 2016-2017 school year.
April 13 marked the 10th anniversary of Westville Central High School's annual Arts Alive Festival. This amazing event featured 155 four-foot-square chalk murals surrounding the building, all of which were created live by 400 student artists in one day. In addition, 366 works of original student art were displayed in the gallery. A multicultural fair was held, live music performances took place throughout the day, and poetry was read, and student-made films were screened. Also, our three high schools turned out numerous plays and musicals this year that attracted community members in droves and garnered rave reviews. This year alone, Grease, Guys and Dolls, The Wonderful Wizard of Neverland, The Hound of the Baskervilles, Cinderella, Yard Sale Queen, Lord of the Flies, Pride at Prejudice, Bridge to Terabithia, and Dr. U, Theater Cabaret, and The Bell Book and Candle were among the plays and the musicals that were staged. Also, this year's annual All Ohio Show hosted by the Ohio Educational Theater Association was once on this island. It was produced by Westville South High School Theater Director Matthew Wolfe and tech-directed by South's Derek McPeak. Thirty-eight students from 19 different high schools around Ohio were featured in this production, including 10 from Westerville City Schools. Our kids walked away with numerous honors. Two juniors from South, Emily Hayman for crew and Cherish Myers for cast, were selected to attend the International Thespian Festival at the University of Nebraska in June.
This year, 58 Westerville City School District students advanced to the PTA State Reflections Competition. Twenty walked away with state honors and three will move on to the national contest. They competed in the areas of literature, music, dance, film, video production, photography, and visual arts. The Westerville Education Foundation Concord Counseling and the Arts Council of Westerville hosted on April 21st a new art-oriented community event called An Artful Affair. It featured art-oriented activities for families and an auction of artwork. Proceeds from the spectacular event totaled approximately $7,500, which will help support WEF initiatives to enhance the education of students in the Westerville City School District. On Sunday afternoon, April 23rd, hundreds of families turned out at the Westerville Community Center to enjoy student artwork on display. Westerville City Schools and the Arts Council of Westerville have hosted district art shows each spring for several years to recognize the accomplishments of pupils and their teachers.
The Westerville South Symphony Orchestra, conducted by Mark Stevens, once again earned a perfect score from all four judges at the Ohio Music Education Association's State Orchestra adjudications. Westerville Central's marching band performed at Disney World, and dozens of students from all three Westerville High Schools participated in the district's 15 solo and ensemble event held on January the 21st, many earning superior and excellent ratings. In a Westerville South new iStudio, students are excited about the additions of video, audio, and virtual reality labs, which give them real-world experiences. Included among many of these opportunities, students are making music in the audio lab using the new MIDI keyboard controller and microphones and plan to record an album. Others are recording podcasts, and art students have the opportunity to create sculptures and paintings using the Tilt Brush program.
In November, third graders from Emerson, Hanby, Hawthorne, Huber Ridge, and Whittier wowed a massive crowd at Vineyard Church in Columbus, performing a concert titled Nations Together in Song. In preparation for the show, the youngsters all learned the same collection of musical numbers and choreography, including, listen to this, including a Liberian tune, an Irish folk song, an Arabic song of peace, an upbeat French-Canadian folk song, and a song based on 12th-century Japanese haiku poem, and a medley of folk songs from North America as well. The group was directed by Mary Fortman, Emerson Hanby, Cynthia Kinzer, Huber Ridge, Evan McIntyre, Whittier, and Sarah McPeak, Hawthorne. I know we just read through that, but that is a powerful illustration of the fine arts education that occurs in the Westerville City School District every day. And we wanted to somehow acknowledge that publicly and to let people know that we want to honor you. We are grateful for the way that you make fine arts a part of our educational process. It is not an addendum. It's not an appendage. It is a part, a deeply valued part, of our belief in the education that the Westerville City School District you provide. So I conclude, as you can see, we are blessed to be the beneficiaries of remarkable talent and dedication in the area of arts education. In closing, I'd like to share with you a brief video taken at the Kings Island Music in the Park competition, April 29. Not only did Blenden's Choir, directed by Joshua Ice, receive first place in the middle school choir division, but they also had the highest score overall of anybody the entire day. Enjoy this brief video. You can see why we wanted to show that, and we certainly could have shown just so many clips of so many things. If you are here tonight and you are a part of our fine arts education, I don't want to embarrass you, maybe I kind of do. Would you mind standing up so that we can see some of you who are in fine arts education in the Westerville City School Districts? I know where you are, so you might as well stand. Thank you for coming here tonight and just letting us honor you, let you all know, Dr. Kellogg knows, we received some emails from some of your colleagues who wanted to be here tonight and just couldn't be here, and we know this is a crazy, busy time. Dr. Kellogg, would you want to share a word?
It is a crazy, busy time, and I've gotten opportunities to see a number of the different performances and opportunities to kids, and I know how folks like these toil every day to make all this thing happen. It looks easy, but it's not, not to get the quality. And then I know, John, didn't I see you perform with the community orchestra this weekend too, at North? So not only they're teaching our kids, but then they're outperforming on their own as well. So I've been raised well as a principal by some very fine music teachers who've taught me the value, and so I appreciate what they do every day. It is a lot, very creative, very inventive, and I'm looking forward to seeing what else we can bring forth for our kids. And to the kids who commit to these programs and become involved, I had a daughter who sang all through high school collegiately and still, that's her love and passion on the side of everything else she does, and so it adds tremendous value to young people's lives. So we do appreciate the time and the efforts that you put in place and know that there's a lot more we could do to support you, and we just keep that in mind and thank you for your efforts.
Once again, thank you very much. I'd open it up. I know we've shared thanks. Anybody else want to offer a... Okay. Okay. We're very excited. We're going to move on with our agenda. You all are welcome to stay for this whole blessed meeting. It was just awesome to have you here. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 4.01, the approval of minutes from April 24, 2017, Board of Education meeting. And these are, this is just a word to see if there are any corrections, additions. We don't make a formal vote on those, hearing none. I will move on to Agenda Item 5.01, our Global Scholars Recognition. Who is, Dr. Kellogg, would you share?
I'll take the honor since Mr. Reeves is out of town, right Kendra? So it's my pleasure. The Global Scholars Program is one that we dipped our toe in a little while ago, I won't get in the way of the history, but it's been a tremendous value to us as a district. The folks at Westerville North have really kind of taken this program to another level and now is one of the leaders in Central Ohio around this program, a number of kids involved. I got the opportunity to go downtown when they were recognizing those graduates, and this is a hotel ballroom with probably 500 of the, I'm sorry? 700 of the leading business industry leaders in the community. And they're recognizing our students and other students who have come through the program, so I'm going to let Ms. Palillo come forward and introduce our guests and have them talk about the program. I think this is one of the finer kept secrets in the district that people need to be aware of. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Good evening, Board, and Mr. Griffith, thank you so much for inviting us to come this evening. I want to share a little bit about the program, kind of piggyback on what Dr. Kellogg has shared, but I also want to introduce the students. Behind me, this is David Austin, this is Afnanen Salem, and this is Mary Rosemore. These three seniors, as Dr. Nestor-Baker said, this is the handshaking season. I'm very grateful that you all get to shake their hands this year because they are graduating seniors, but they're also graduating with the Global Scholars Diploma. This is a very unique program. We are one of very few schools that actually has graduates. Last year, Westerville North and Columbus International High School were the only schools in all of Ohio that had graduates in this program. We graduated three students last year, and I think International School had five, I believe. This year, we have eight students who are graduating, and there's a few other schools that are jumping in as well. I wanted to share a little bit about the program because it's very near and dear to my heart, since I teach cultural studies. But in my 31 years in this district, yes, 31 years here, I think this program is an amazing program because it combines everything that we love and what we do, and that is preparing our students for the future, making them aware of the world around us. And if we're not doing that, then we're really not doing our jobs. And I think this program is a wonderful opportunity for our students to be exposed to the world through a variety of different measures. I have a quick little PowerPoint I want to try to share with you. I think it's on. Now I'm on. Okay. There we go. So the Global Scholars Program is associated with the Columbus Council on World Affairs, wonderful program with Patrick Tarran, who is the CEO of the program. We have various corporate sponsors like Honda, Batel, Ross Labs, I mean Abbott Labs. These are wonderfully huge programs based here in Central Ohio, and yet they have the opportunity to come and get to know our kids, our kids get to know them, and it's a program that's quickly developing. These students had a small little part in it, and unfortunately, they're not going to get as much exposure as the future students will, but it's a great opportunity to work with our district, our community, with Central Ohio, and all of these corporations. This is a program that the Global Scholars created to show how much our world is interacting with each other, between various businesses, various programs, be it science, technology, business, education, arts, there's so many aspects of our world where we integrate with one another. And this program shows a variety of different opportunities down the road as our students pursue their own professional careers, of things that they can do to be more globally interactive. We look at various things such as education and the various people that are involved and the economics that are involved in all of these countries. So what happens is that the Global Scholars Program is developed into three levels. In Level 1, it's basically just the In Level One, it's basically just the exploration. Currently, at Westerville North, we have about 50 students total, 12 to 13 students in Level One and the remaining in Levels Two and Three. This year also was the first year that we expanded the program to both our sister schools of Westerville South and Westerville Central. We have about 25 students total. And our goal as part of the program, and I know for me personally, and I know with Scott Reeves, we want to see that program expand to at least 50 students at each building so that each year, we have more and more students who are graduating, being more globally aware. This program does require the students to be actively engaged in Level One. They do things such as investigate the world, recognize perspectives, they do research, they can go to foreign films, they go to festivals, they do all sorts of exploration, both on their own means as well as collectively in groups. And they explore different issues. There we go. These are some pictures of things that our Level Students, Level One Students, excuse me, have been able to do this year. They've been involved in guest speakers, both downtown where we work with, conjunctively with Franklin University, as well as going to places such as Honda America out in Marysville. And students have numerous opportunities to explore and see the various careers that will take them just beyond Westerville, Ohio. And so we try to explain to them, you know, why being more globally aware, things that they don't realize now, how it can take them into their futures. Level Two was predominantly the year that I had with these three, well, actually, Mary Rose is in Level Three. The other two, we did, let me just explain, these two here, along with about five others, were very industrious in the sense they did Levels Two and Three their senior year, which is very difficult to do, but we have five kids that are graduating, completing both levels in just one school year. And that's a lot of work. So kudos to them because honestly, it was a lot of things they had to do. Level Two was an online program set up through the Columbus Council on World Affairs. The students had to research an online program that was established, they got to pick various countries that they wanted to study. The program itself involved them reading, watching videos, seeing interviews, talking to people, and doing responses and reports, in addition to going on field trips and so forth to become more aware of global issues that exist. And then Level Three is kind of the capstone portion of it where the students take an issue that is very near to them, something that they feel is important, they do research and they find ways to go about sharing their perspective or the research that they've acquired. Each of these three here behind me have had the opportunity to do their Level Three and complete it successfully. And because of that, they are going to be awarded their Global Scholars Diploma. And this is a picture of our students who will be graduating this year from North with the Global Scholars Diploma, which for those of you who are coming tomorrow night to the Senior Awards, you'll get to see all of them there. And so we're just very excited about the program. Afnan was actually the keynote speaker of the ceremony that Dr. Kellogg was mentioning, the international awards ceremony. And if you didn't get to hear, lucky you, she is going to be speaking at North's graduation this year. And so she is going to be sharing about her experience in all of that. So I just wanted you to be more aware of the program and encourage you to help us spread the word throughout the district, to make this program more available to our students here at the high school level because it is something that we feel in all three high schools that's very important. We developed the program to fit into our curriculum, both in the social studies and the language arts, so that we have opportunities to reach more students. And it is something that we hope that more students will want to become a part of. We're hoping down the road, it develops into college scholarships, more internships for our students through these companies, and that they can use their knowledge and experience to make the world a better place. So are there any questions? Anyone would like to know anything more?
I was just wondering if they would share what their projects were, just a little bit about them.
My project is still in the process of getting completed, but what I'm most passionate about is climate change. So what my idea was to start small, to make a difference. So what I wanted to do is go to an elementary school, a local one right next to our school, and kind of influence the educational program there in science to teach the elementary school kids how to interact positively with their environment through implementing recycling programs there, to get them involved, to teach them what can and can't be recycled, and teaching them environmental ethics, like why we should care about the environment, what services it can provide, and to allow them to take action on that, to kind of bolster that idea that we can make a change, which is what I wanted to do.
All right. So for my event, I actually hosted an event, it was like a storytelling event. I had, I just wanted to show a different image about Muslim immigrants that come here other than what we see in the media daily. So I basically had two Muslim speakers and two Christian speakers so you can get a point of view from both sides. And like, they shared their stories, the two Muslim immigrants shared their story about moving to the United States and like what they had, like had to deal with and like overcoming with Islamophobia and what they do. And like, one of them was, is actually becoming a police officer, she's a female Muslim that actually was born, born in Somalia, raised in the Middle East and moved here and like graduated high school here and she's graduating this June to become a police officer. Another one was just like, she was a student at Westerville North and graduated a few years ago. I think she's in nursing school and she's very active in like, in our mosque and everything. So she came and shared her story about how it was like being a Muslim and living here and what she does daily. And it had two Christian speakers, one was actually a pastor, he came and shared his story about interacting with immigrants and Muslims especially, and like, oh, this is what the media shows and like, this is how I, what I learned from them and like, what was his thought about Muslims, Muslim immigrants before interacting with, before actually getting to know a Muslim and like how that changed his life. And I had another person that I actually worked with that we, I volunteer as tutor program that is like mostly ESL students, and she had a lot of like Muslim students that come and like, she learned a lot from them and how that changed her life, just to see the different view than what actually the media shows. And I had like about 30 guests. I had, I hosted the event beginning of April, I think it was April 7th at Westerville North and it was just like a storytelling event to, to bring another image about Muslim immigrants that moved here.
For my project, I did a documentary specifically on Afnan and I interviewed various students from my school who speak a second language at home than English in the school district, and just how their, their lives have been, you know, transferring from home to school, how the interaction is at the school. And I filmed them throughout the school, I also with my help of Mr. Mo. I created a club, the Media Arts Club at our school, and we got cameras and lots of fun things to do. And so now, next year, they're hoping to expand it so they can continue to do these documentaries and interview students like Afnan who have interesting stories. And I will add, through this program, I know as Ms. Palito said, I was awarded the Morell Scholarship from the Ohio State University, and it's from the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And personally, I believe that the only reason I was awarded it was because of this program and the work that I've been able to do in it. And I was also accepted into the International Affairs Scholars Program at Ohio State while I'll be able to continue the work I've done through Global Scholars. So I'm very excited for the program at North and it's doing amazing things for me and my future, and I hope it does the same to students as well.
Thank you very much for letting us come and share this evening.
We are beyond grateful and I don't, I, any board members want to ask an additional question or a thought?
No, but I would actually like to see the documentary. I can't see what the projects the other two did, but the documentary, if you could send a link, send it to Dr. Kellogg and then he could send it to us, that would be great. And I'm really looking forward to seeing where we go with the program. I'm very proud of Westerville North for stepping forward and taking such an interest in making it happen and making the experience so worthwhile for the kids. And congratulations on the scholarships and the acceptance into International Affairs. That's really exciting and speaks very highly of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We have some wonderful things going on in this district, Dr. Kellogg.
I just try and stay out of the way.
And that's a good thing.
Get people like Kendra and you just stay out of the way, right?
We are, we are moving to Agenda Item 5.02, Community Engagement Update and Next Steps. That's why I handed it off to Dr. Kellogg.
If I could just moment, kind of piggyback on this piece because it is really kind of interesting in how it ties to our goal of increasing college and career readiness and the kinds of experiences. So they didn't just do projects, if you heard, every one of their projects was designed to influence and bring further leadership from other people and further understanding. And that's, that's a lot. Two, it's also evidence to me that when you put the right things in front of young people, they are highly motivated. Between, in your senior year, to double up what you're doing here, to take additional coursework, commit to other activities, and an exit project as part of your senior year, that's, that's strong stuff. And it takes strong teacher leadership. I know Kendra's been very involved and several other teachers there, Stephanie McGeorge has been very involved. I know the other high schools are picking up on it and that momentum's going. To piggyback on that, the other place that was exciting for me recently, I got to go down to Columbus State last week. My weeks are all scrunched together. Anyway, you know, we built the Health Pathways Curriculum several years ago as part of Straight A Grant, and part of that was opportunities for kids to earn industry credentials and piggyback with Columbus State as part of that. Well, we had 20, 20 students earn their clinical lab technician certification as part of their course sequence in that from Columbus State just about a week ago, I can't remember the date. And so I got to go down to Columbus State and similar kinds of stories of young people committing to work beyond what we would normally expect of them, down there in their scrubs in Columbus State, and then hearing the person in charge of the program at Columbus State rave about our kids and their efforts within the program, much like these young people did. So they're, they're bending adult perspectives on what young people can do and, and finding pathways for themselves. So I'm excited to see these kinds of pieces start to take, take shape and seeing where else we can go in that effort. So kudos to the three young people and to Mrs. Palito and all the leadership at North and to all those teachers who are involved with the Health Pathways piece and what we're bearing fruit there, you know, fine arts people today as well for the work. So appreciate all that. That's a long-winded way to get around to a really short report on community engagement. So we, as we discussed last time, we went back and took some of the information that we collected so far from community engagement, pushed that back out to everybody who has participated so far, asked them to complete a survey to give us some more data. It's a busy time of year, so to push that back on people and put a timeline in front of them, we are at this stage, this morning we reviewed, we'd like to increase our participation in that. So we pushed it back out again and reopened it to, to make sure we can get as much data back from those folks as possible, give them that time. So at this time, I don't have any data to share other than we've pushed it back out, we have till the end of the week, we'll see where we're at, and then we'll build on the schedule of activities that we started talking about last time we met. So we already have scheduled a place and time for a gallery walk, if that's where we choose to, to present results. On May 31st, we have a room at the public library. So if we still tilt in that direction, that's what we'll do. If not, we'll regroup as we get ready for the next, start of next school year. So that's where we're at so far. Happy to take any questions.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Moving to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comments Related to Action Items. We have no one signed up this evening. Agenda Item 7.01, Financial Updates. We have none this evening. And moving on to Agenda Item Eight, Personnel Consent Agenda. Do I, I think we will take all of these together unless there is someone who'd like to pull anything out, are we okay with that? So may I have a motion and a second to take all of these as one?
So moved.
Second. And I believe we have a report. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the Board. Tonight's consent agenda contains nine sections involving over 350 persons. Section 8.01 is the retirement of one classified employee in one disability retirement. 8.02 is the resignation of two classified employees and two substitutes. 8.03 is the resignation of three teachers. 8.04 is a leave of absence for five teachers. 8.05 is a temporary change of assignment for five classified employees. 8.06 is a contractual status change for 10 classified employees. 8.07 is a variety of one-time payments for teachers. 8.08 is the employment of two classified employees and three substitutes. And 8.09 is the employment of one principal. And I'd like to take a moment to introduce Dr. Drew Tomlin, who's with us this evening. Drew was selected to lead Heritage beginning next school year, and he joins us from the Association of Middle Level Educators. He's been a principal and a teacher in Georgia, and he and his wife and children live in Westerville and his children attend Westerville City Schools. And we are thrilled he is able to, able to and willing to join us, and we are so excited to welcome Drew.
Well, Drew, I was delivered a package.
We're going to give this to him before we even vote on him?
Is that okay? Well, she was, she was introducing his family.
She, she was.
So I just figured this is the time. So I have a little note to read to you first and I'm sure, I want you to take it to him so I can read it. Dr. Tomlin, congratulations and welcome to Heritage. The staff and students are excited to meet you and welcome your leadership. Tonight just happens to be our moving up night for our incoming sixth graders, so unfortunately, we had to miss you being recognized by the Board. Here is a little token of appreciation for all that we know that you will bring to Heritage. With pride, with much pride, the Heritage Staff. Sorry, I was just excited.
She was so excited even before we vote. I don't know, you know, we have to vote. Oh, gosh. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming aboard. Well, thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Congratulations first.
Maybe.
Jury still out.
Did you want some?
Just undeserved.
Okay.
Let us vote on you.
Yeah.
Also in this section, we have the employment of three teachers, one home instruction tutor and two supplemental contracts. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I was going to ask several, I was going to ask several questions about Drew, but apparently we're, no, I'm just kidding. That was awesome, really. That's, that's exciting, that the school is excited like that and wanted to honor you. Any questions, any, any feedback? Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll? Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd? Hmm. Yes. Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo? Yes. Welcome aboard and to all, thank you. And I know that this is an awfully busy time for HR. We just really appreciate the work that you are doing and just finding the best people as we continue to do. So thank you and welcome aboard. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Nine. These are, this is a section, Recommended Action, Old Business. This is a section of final readings for a number of curriculum media specialists. And we have gone through these and I don't normally just go over these this quickly, but I am going to ask, would you like to take these collectively since these are final readings, or do you want to pull them out? Yes.
I thought we were gonna...
Go over them?
I wanted to double check on the, if I could interrupt.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
The health grade, health course for eighth grade. And I think this one's on me where I communicated that we were going to pull that one because we had some additional conversation and on, shame on me for having the conversation with everybody except for the very important person who's able to take that off the agenda. And so that's why it didn't happen. That one's on me, I'll take the lashes. So we would like, the administration would like the opportunity to hold on the eighth grade health curriculum so that we can have a little more conversation before we bring it forward.
Okay. Then could I ask for a motion? That's 9.01, correct?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to pull that off the agenda right now? Should we do that?
I will...
A motion to postpone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll do a motion to postpone. That allows us to bring it back later on after there've been discussions and after we deal with some internal concerns that we want to deal with around this course of study. Postponing lets us bring it back. So I move to postpone.
Second.
And a second. And so let's go ahead and vote on that one. Now, since these are final readings, should we have a motion? Do you want to entertain a motion for 9.02 through 9.13? May I have a motion to take those as one?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll on that motion?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Now, since these are final readings, should we have a motion? Do you want to entertain a motion for 9.02 through 9.13? May I have a motion to take those as one?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll on that motion?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Now, we just voted on the vote, we voted on the motion to take them all together. Now, we have to vote on them, correct? Okay. Who would like to, motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. And now, this is voting on the items themselves, 9.02 through 9.13. Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, oh, sorry, 13.01, I'm sorry, 12.01, Public Comments. Reminder, you have five minutes to address the board in the public comment section of the agenda. Please remember to adjust the agenda item. This is for earlier, so you can just come on up. This is Ms. Peg Duffy. Would you please come forward? I was reading the proviso for the earlier public comment section.
Which you had already read.
Which I had already read.
Anytime we've heard the community engagement from the time we talked about doing it through all of the reports, we've always heard, we want to get more voices, we want to hear from more people. I have several ideas where we might be easily interesting more people. One, you have posted, "The Board will meet in special session May 15th at 6:00 p.m." Special session regarding what? Hopefully, in board comments, you'll tell us a little bit about what it's going to be. Usually, a special session is one particular thing that the board has to take action on because there is a timeline. This initially was on as a work session, if it's going to be a work session. How about telling us what it's going to be, so maybe people will be interested? Another one, we see bids coming to the board for approval when they're over a certain amount, but there are other projects that are already in the budget that can be done. You know, it would be nice if those were announced, even though you don't have to be approving them, if we heard regular reports. Funny thing, I've heard some of these from some of the students that none of the adults knew about, just some ideas that might get more people involved.
Thank you, Peg. Good comments. Appreciate that. Moving on this time to 13.01, Board Comments. You know, Nancy, we highlighted you. How about if I, how about if I point to you? I don't normally point people out now, not too much, but Nancy, would you?
Sure.
Do you have any comments you'd like to share?
I do, I do, actually. The recognition from OSBA tonight was a lovely thing. I didn't want to correct such a lovely resolution, but I've actually served 18 and 1/2 years. But they only give those, I guess, in five-year increments. I thank them very much, and I'm glad they think I'm younger than I am. But the resolution made me really start to think about where we've been and where we're going, and the work we've done, and the work that remains to be done. It has been about three and 1/2 years now since Tracy and Rick and I took our seats on the board for this particular term. And at that time, I pledged, and we all pledged, the board was working very diligently to continue to improve student opportunities and outcomes, and to maintain the fiscal accountability that's necessary, and to strengthen our engagement and relationships with the people of the community, both inside and outside of our schools. We've been working on that, and a lot has been accomplished. I'm not going to list all of those things right now, but a great deal has been accomplished in three and 1/2 years' time because of the committed people of the district. The leadership team, the Board of Education, the Superintendent, the Treasurer, all of the Central Office staff, our building-level teams, all of our teachers, all of our classified staff, working together, great strides have been made in all three of those areas that I mentioned. In this district, it seems like almost every day, at least every week, for sure, every month, there are new ideas and fresh perspectives that come up for discussion and many of which are put into play. That's exciting. What is even better is that when we do that, our roots are very firmly planted. What we do in this district is done with strong ties to the traditions of this school district. At the same time those roots are strong, the ideas can then take flight. And I think that that underpinning philosophy is one of the reasons we've been able to make so many strides in the last three and 1/2 years. So, we've made a lot of progress, a lot of important progress, but there is a great deal of work yet to be done. Not only do we need to continue with the rebuilding that we have done, we need to continue with the shaping of the future that our programs need to be for our students, and our schools need to be for the community. In other words, we're not done yet. And because of what we've done, because of where we are, and because of what remains to be accomplished, I thought I would take the opportunity this evening to say that I am going to run again for the Board of Education this fall. Hard to believe it's time to be thinking of that, but this is my official announcement that I will indeed seek to make it 22 years. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you very much. Jerry, any comments?
Yes. I just wanted to say during this special week in May that comes around every year that I really appreciate all of our teaching staff. I think they do a great job every day throughout the year and really add to everything that the students are able to experience in the district. And then also, since this is a special night for fine arts, I just wanted to mention that I've been to a number of music and fine art activities and events for many of the schools throughout the district, and I've never been disappointed. It's really amazing, everything that the students are able to accomplish with the support of their teachers and staff. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything that they're doing, all the teachers, including the fine art teachers. Thank you very much.
So, you want me to go next? Okay, sure. Peg, our special meeting on May 15th is going to be about facilities. So, we're going to have a work session, and we're going to try to talk about everything and share information with one another. That's the first thing. It is National Teacher Appreciation Week. To all the teachers out there, you truly are our heroes, and we appreciate that, all that you do for our children and the kids. And then, on that, on a personal note, I am honored to have been elected to serve as a member of your Board of Education, and I, too, in the fall, will be running for reelection.
This evening, I was really encouraged by the Global Scholars Program. I've said this a number of times in session, and my fellow board members, as well as many people in the community know, I worked extensively globally, still do, doing a tremendous amount of working in Canada, and that's not a suburb of Buffalo. That's actually a country. And in the course of all that work, I've been very fortunate. I had this question asked of me the other day. Somebody said, "How many countries have you been to?" And I've lost count, but it's somewhere in the 40s. And they said, "Wow, that's amazing. How many languages do you speak?" And as Mark Twain said, I think, "English and that poorly," right? And never had the opportunities for the type of global exposure that our students have today. Definitely want to see our students and our families pursue the opportunities that are resident within the district, whether it's Global Scholars, International Baccalaureate, which I was just having a conversation on my sidewalk about today with a rising sophomore. Because the reality is, is that this is the world that we truly work and live in, and the opportunities to remain isolated and simply, you know, do business in the United States, independent of everything else, those days are long gone. Very encouraged by that. I'm also encouraged, and I'll voice my direct support for my fellow board members. I've said this as well multiple times in open sessions. I thoroughly enjoy the company of my colleagues on this board. We are friends. We did not start out as friends. We have become not just acquainted, but gone through a number of board challenges, as well as family and personal challenges together. I love serving with this board. I have no problems stating that my fellow board members that are running for reelection have my firm and faithful support because, Nancy, as you said, we have work to do, and I feel very, very confident that we are moving in the right direction. And Peg, I want to thank you because you have always been the diligent voice of the community here. We know that one of our challenges is, is that people don't show up. They're not, they may not be familiar with our processes, they may not be familiar with the opportunities, yet you're here and you share what you hear in the community, and you share your own beliefs and recommendations. And I do have to say that, given what I heard coming up on getting ready to start the fourth year, when I first joined the board, I'm encouraged that your recommendations are what I would qualify respectfully as tuning. I feel like we've worked very, very hard to be transparent, very hard to not just address your concern, but the community's concerns about sharing much more information on a much more regular basis. And that is a job, just as running this district is, that will never be done. There is no finish to that, and we need to get better. And I truly appreciate the fact that you're there to be that voice. So, thank you, Peg. And that's what I have for this evening. Thanks, Rick.
I'd like to read a statement in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. As many of you know, this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week sponsored by the National PTA. We are fortunate to have dedicated, exceptional teachers who are committed to guiding and educating the youth of our community right here in the Westerville City Schools. Today's classroom are our microcosm of the world as the students who occupy them come from a variety of cultures, backgrounds, and traditions. Here in Westerville, our teachers help their students learn to embrace, honor, and celebrate our differences. Students also bring with them a set of needs that are as diverse as they are unique. The future of our community and that of our country depends upon our ability to meet those needs and provide equality education to all our students. Our teachers, this board believes, answers the call on a daily basis. They spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and giving back to our families and community. Just about every day, I hear from someone who has a great story to share about our teachers. I hear about educators who have gone above and beyond to help struggling students learn how to read or succeed in other classes. I've marveled at the stories of compassion and empathy exhibited by our professionals as they help students and families going through a difficult time. Any one of us at any given time can experience that kind of unexpected setback. Education is a people-oriented business, and I'm proud to say that I believe we believe that we have some of the best people around working magic in our classrooms, our schools, in our offices each and every day. While I would love to see this happen every day during the year, this week especially, please take time, take a moment to thank a teacher. It can be one of our current teachers, or you can even take a moment to reach out to one of those special teachers who made a difference in your life when you were in school. On behalf of my colleagues on the board and the administration, thank you to all of our teachers who, for your dedication and devotion to your work. We do appreciate you, and we are glad that you are a part of the Westerville City School District family. I have no problems stating that my fellow board members that are running for reelection, you have my, my firm and faithful support, because Nancy, as you said, we have work to do, and I feel very, very confident that we are moving in the right direction. And Peg, I want to thank you because you have, have always been the diligent voice of the community here. We know that one of our challenges is, is that people don't show up. They're not, they, they may not be familiar with our processes, they may not be familiar with the opportunities, yet you're here and you share what you hear in the community, and you share your, your own beliefs and, and recommendations. And, and I do have to say that, given what I heard coming up on getting ready to start the fourth year, when I first joined the board, I'm encouraged that your recommendations are what I would qualify respectfully as tuning. I feel like we've worked very, very hard to be transparent, very hard to not just address your concern, but the community's concerns about sharing much more information on a much more regular basis. And that is a job, just as running this district is, that will never be done. There is no finish to that, and we need to get better, and I truly appreciate the fact that you're there to be that voice. So thank you, Peg, and that's what I have for this evening. Thanks, Rick.
I'd like to read a statement in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. As many of you know, this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week sponsored by the National PTA. We are fortunate to have dedicated, exceptional teachers who are committed to guiding and educating the youth of our community right here in the Westerville City Schools. Today's classroom are our microcosm of the world as the students who occupy them come from a variety of cultures, backgrounds, and traditions. Here in Westerville, our teachers help their students learn to embrace, honor, and celebrate our differences. Students also bring with them a set of needs that are as diverse as they are unique. The future of our community and that of our country depends upon our ability to meet those needs and provide a quality education to all our students. Our teachers, this board believes, answers the call on a daily basis. They spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and giving back to our families and community. Just about every day, I hear from someone who has a great story to share about our teachers. I hear about educators who have gone above and beyond to help struggling students learn how to read or succeed in other classes. I've marveled at the stories of compassion and empathy exhibited by our professionals as they help students and families going through a difficult time. Any one of us at any given time can experience that kind of unexpected setback. Education is a people-oriented business, and I'm proud to say that I believe, we believe, that we have some of the best people around working magic in our classrooms, our schools, and our offices each and every day. While I would love to see this happen every day during the year, this week especially, please take time, take a moment to thank a teacher. It can be one of our current teachers, or you can even take a moment to reach out to one of those special teachers who made a difference in your life when you were in school. On behalf of my colleagues on the board and the administration, thank you to all of our teachers who, for your dedication and devotion to your work. We do appreciate you, and we are glad that you are a part of the Westerville City School This has been one of those really good Board of Education meetings. We're gonna celebrate fine arts, music, creativity is all around our district. It's one of those meetings where we work our way through policies, agenda items, human resources, welcoming new colleagues, teasing them before we vote on them. It's one of those meetings where we have a public comment that makes us think, yeah, maybe we didn't communicate that well enough. It's one of those meetings where we get to honor somebody who has served for 15 or 18 and a half years, nobody knows for sure. And it's one of those meetings that I'm really honored to serve here. And so I have just a brief statement. It has been my privilege and honor to serve on the Westerville Board of Education these past three and a half years, and my passion to make a positive impact for our students, staff, and community has not diminished. I continue to seek ways to maximize each student's potential, while with fiscal prudence, provide the tools and facilities necessary to deliver a 21st century education. I am personally more determined than ever to try and pursue open and authentic dialogue within our community to achieve those ends. And I continue to be moved to try and impact legislation on all levels as it pertains to educational impact and excellence. Therefore, with a wider base of knowledge and a deepening sense of purpose, and through many conversations and significant prayer, I announce that I am a candidate for an additional term of service for the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. I thank the community for their support, and I ask for the same during this next election. I am beyond blessed to serve in this capacity. Thank you. Agenda item 14.01, the board will meet in special session, facilities focused, on May 15th, 6:00 P.M. And on May 22nd, our retirement recognition at 6:00 P.M. here at the Early Learning Center. On, we are going into, moving into agenda item 15, you can see, we are going to go into executive session, discuss personnel matters. And so in just a second, I will ask for a motion and a second, and we will vote on that to go into executive session. And just to let you know that we will adjourn from executive session, we will not be coming back into this room. So if I could have a motion and a second on going into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, we now move into executive session. Thank you for coming this evening.